Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order. Mr. Placko, can you call the roll, please?
Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Jack Miley, here. Belinda Grassi.
Here.
Tom Hack.
Here.
Stephen Jeffries.
Here.
Gentlemen, can please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not considered a public-community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the Public Participation section on the agenda. Make a motion to approve the November 21st, 2016 Board Meeting Minutes. I've got a second, please. Thank you, Mrs. Grassi. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Placko, call the roll, please.
Jack Miley.
I'm sorry. I'm reading something.
To approve the minutes?
Yes.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Hack.
Aye.
Stephen Jeffries.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye. Motion carried. All right, it takes us to Special Reports.
We do have one today. Julie Weber decided to show up today.
Hey, thank you!
We put on Melridge. I think she might be waiting for someone who's setting up for a special event over at Lemuth, right?
Yeah, I'm just gonna go ahead.
Okay.
So, I said if she wasn't here that I would just take it on, so. All right. Okay, so I'm going to share some of the great things that we're doing over at Melridge this year. All right, so I'm going to focus on some of the things that we're doing with the staff, the students, the parents, and the community. And we really feel that if all four of these different facets of Melridge work together, that's what creates a great environment for student learning. All right, so we're going to start with leadership. Last year, our building leadership team began a book study using The Leader in Me. And we conducted that, starting with our small group, one teacher from each grade level. And then, we liked it so much, and we had visited some other schools in the northeast Ohio area that had this working and up and running in their school. We went to a school very much like what we would find here at Riverside. And then, we went to a Cleveland Municipal School and saw it working there, too. So, it didn't really matter which environment we were in, they had the same principles. And it was really great to see it working in two different types of schools. So, that was last year. And then, this summer, I bought the book for the whole staff, and they kind of delved into it a little bit more. And then, this year, we have decided that we are growing leaders. And that's kind of our main focus this year, in these three different areas that we're working on. We started with environment, and then integrating the leadership language and the principles within the things that we do at Melridge, and then providing opportunities to apply the leadership lessons to the students. So, if we take a look first at the environment, we have been working on creating a proactive culture by design. So, when you walk into Melridge, we want you to know what we value and what we stand for without ever having to say anything. So, we want you to see it, we want you to kind of just be able to walk through the halls and talk to the kids, and kind of know what we value there. Some of the things that we did this year is we redid our office and our entrance. Because when you walked in, we wanted you to kind of feel what we were trying to do there. So, we put up some different artwork, it's just very simple, but some of those words that you see on there, like "need", "create", "imagine", "wonder", "respect", that's what we're hoping to build within our students. Okay. And throughout the building, these are just a few pictures of some of the things we did. We put some quotes up on the walls. And we also, you'll see down there, the music and art sign. We had a sign put up for every teacher and every room in the building, so it's, you can kind of see where you're going. And outside of every classroom door, we put a little sign that says "The Graduating Class of", and then whatever grade level it is. And it says on there, "Begin with the end in mind". And I've gone into every classroom this year, and we've talked about what that sign meant and why it's hanging outside your classroom door. And the kids are able to tell you that what we do here in 3rd grade is going to help us get to 2026, and what we want to achieve in order to graduate from high school. So, that is outside of each of our classroom doors. At our entrance, we really tried to get the students involved in creating the entrance a little bit more. So, Mr. Porstowski, when he is there during his 12 weeks for art, he has an art club that he holds during recess times, and the kids volunteer to come to that art club. And you'll see that they're painting the chairs that we have sitting outside in the entrance, and they made the artwork that is hanging on the walls when you first walk in. The next one, integrating the leadership language and the principles in what we do. We're really working on developing a common language between the students and the teachers, and using the idea of the seven habits within the school. So, I'm not going to go through all of them, but a lot of the kids, even if you walk up to a 1st grader, they can tell you what it means to be proactive. They can tell you that in order to be proactive, "I'm in charge. I'm in charge of my decisions. I'm in charge of me. And no one else can tell me what to do, and I'm going to make those choices." They can tell you what it means to think win-win. Like, how can both people come out of this situation with this meeting their goal? And what can we do to help each other do that? So, they're really starting to apply that language. When I walk into classrooms and I see them having their book group meetings, the kids are talking about the characters in the books, and how they're demonstrating these seven habits. "Oh, I can see that this character is being proactive by..." And they're able to give examples from the story. So, it's great to hear that language happening within the classrooms, too. I kind of have goal-setting going up the side there, because that is something that we're really beginning to work on. I'm not going to say that it's like perfect at this point, but we're getting the students looking at where they are right now, and some of their goals, and what can they do to get themselves there. So, every nine weeks, they take a look at setting an academic goal, and then setting a personal goal. And what are they going to do to help themselves reach that goal? So, that's, I would kind of say, is one of those things that's in its beginning stages right now. We're trying it out, and we come back at every BLT meeting and take a look at how that's going and what we could do to improve that. The third facet is opportunities to apply the leadership lessons. And we have created many opportunities at school for students to kind of get involved in the daily goings-on and the daily working at Melridge. So, the 5th graders, they lead the morning announcements, we have recycling team, we have classrooms that have paired up to have reading buddies, we have different classroom responsibilities, we have some students working with younger students and kind of mentoring them, we have students that help the custodian after lunch perform different responsibilities. And one of the big things that we're doing this year is we opened up a school store. It is called the Melridge Market. And we went, we kind of took this from the ground up. So, the 5th graders are responsible for running the Melridge Market, and they had to fill out a job application, they had to turn it in to me, and then they came down to the office and we had an interview. And it was very impressive, like, I was very impressed with their answers, how they were able to think on their feet and answer my questions. So, they did a really, they did a great job. And yes, all of them got hired. I did. I wasn't choosing, but they all have a job, they just can't all work at the same time. Like, last week was the grand opening, and all those kids right there showed up. And I was like, "Okay, I know we're excited, but we need to make a schedule." But they made everything for it. So, they made the flyers that went home, they designed those, they sent them out, they created all the signs that are home around the school, like telling people that the Melridge Market is open and when it's open. They obviously work it when it is open, and they are responsible for counting the money, they keep all of that. We're going to deposit it every two weeks, and when they do that, they're going to be responsible for kind of helping us fill out that slip that we fill out to deposit our money. So, they are really responsible for everything, responsible for keeping track of what's selling and what's not selling, and keeping everything in stock. So, we had a great first week with it open last week. Something else that we have continued to do this year, we always did Student of the Month, and this year, we decided to change it to Leader of the Month. So, we have a Leader of the Month breakfast, and we got Brugers Bagels in Menner to sponsor our breakfast this year, so they provide us with Bagel Bites. And the parents come in, and they enjoy that little breakfast treat. And then, I usually read a story, and we talk about how the story illustrates some of the traits, the character traits that we're trying to develop in our leaders. And then, they get a certificate and a book. So, we've had a very good response to this. And you'll see that some of the two little quotes on there from Hannah and Nick, they actually did say that. I asked them what leadership was, and that's what they told me. So, they're starting to kind of see the importance of it, too. And I included that one picture on there, on the bottom, with our October leaders. That is Jim Basketball Jones, and he is an excellent speaker, and it was probably the best assembly I have seen in my 19 years. He was so motivational, and he, it was fabulous. So, that was, we'll definitely have him back again. All right, moving on to another topic, this year, we decided to do One School, One Book, and we read The Lemonade War. And this is just a picture of our kind of book unveiling to the whole school. So, all the kids got a copy of the book, and they were encouraged to read it with their families. Some of the teachers also chose to read it in their classrooms as a read-aloud. And then, we did just different activities in the classroom, and the teachers kind of did with it what they, how they felt their, you know, what their kids could kind of handle with it. Our main vision this year was really to empower the teachers and the students to become leaders, and to kind of work together through what we're doing at Melridge. My last piece is how we are kind of building relationships within our school, but also reaching out within our community, too. So, we started in September, there's an International Dot Day in the middle of September, it's around September 15-ish. And it just focuses on the book called The Dot. But the whole purpose of that book is to celebrate your uniqueness and your individuality. So, we, each of the kids in the whole school made a dot this year, and if you've been to Melridge recently, you see them hanging in the windows. Some of them are still hanging up there, others have obviously faded by now, and they're down. But it just, it kind of celebrates the student and their individuality and creativity. Another thing that we did in connection with The Lemonade War, we had, at the Fall Carnival, we had a lemonade stand, where the kids, again, were responsible for manning that lemonade stand, and it was pure donation, they handed out glasses of lemonade. And then, we took that money and we donated it to Alex's Lemonade Stand, from the kids at Melridge. In October, we again collected sacks for Socktober and donated them to the Sub-Zero Mission. This year, we were able to collect 400 pairs of socks, and they came and picked them up, and we're very excited to receive them.
The person that founded the Sub-Zero is a Riverside guy, too, right?
Yes. Yep. In November, we had a Veterans Day Assembly, and the 5th graders took it over this year. They ran the whole assembly. So, there was a person who was in charge of kind of calling each different event that we had, and they kind of just ran the whole assembly. We had many Melridge parents and grandparents attend the assembly, and they did a phenomenal job. Something else that we did in correlation with this, we had a coin war the first two weeks of November, and we did it by grade level. And then, we took that, all of the money that we collected for that coin war, we donated it to the David A. Baker Scholarship Fund, and we were able to donate $875 to them. And Mrs. Baker did come to our Veterans Day Assembly to accept our donation. And then, in these few weeks between Thanksgiving and winter break, we are again doing our Hat and Mitten Tree, where we will give those donations to the Hope Chest in Painesville. Kind of a little look ahead, we will be working on writing thank-you cards to people in our community in January. In February, we are again doing the Healthy Heart Family Fitness Night, where we pair up Lake County Y, and Heinens, and Lake Health, to provide different activities for our families to participate in. In March, we're going to have March Madness, but reading style, instead of basketball. We also have something that we're going to work with Rescue Village, and we're really going to try to work, have some different growth, meaning student growth and goal-setting celebrations in our second semester. And I just wanted to end with this little quote, "It is a marathon, not a sprint." So, some of the things that we're doing at Melridge, there's a lot that we want to accomplish, but we realize we cannot do it all this year. So, we're taking it little by little, because we want to make sure that we build sustainable achievements. We don't want to just do something and then have it be done. We want it to kind of grow and build from there. So, we're trying to take it piece by piece and roll it out. That's it?
Very nice, thank you.
Any questions?
What do they sell at the store?
What do they sell at the store? Well, we actually sell good school supplies. During the summer, I went out during all the school, you know, sales and everything, and I bought like real pencils, not fancy ones, and real erasers, not ones they're going to play with the whole time, and take them apart and put them back together, and crayons, notebooks, folders. The hot seller last week was the small, little composition notebook.
Oh, yeah, they are super cute.
Yeah, they are super cute. And we're almost out of them, so we're going to have to restock them, but, yes.
That's awesome.
What?
You got dismissal, right?
No.
Right. There's still like three tubs of them in the Viroi basement.
I'm sure. They might be a little moldy.
That smells good as it used to.
Nice. Awesome. Anything else?
Thanks, Julie.
Yeah?
That's awesome.
Do you have anything else for Special Reports, Mr. Phillips?
Thank you.
All right.
I was there.
All right, that takes us to old business. Does anybody have anything? New business? I have a question about Chromebook repairs, actually. I'm just curious how that works and how we're charged for it, because my, this is actually coming from my house, my son's in 7th grade, has had this Chromebook in his possession for probably two weeks the entire school year. He got it, it broke, turned it in, didn't have a loaner, so he uses mine all the time, got it back, within the same day, they still hadn't fixed the problem, sent it back, got it back today, problem still wasn't fixed, got it back again. So, are we being charged by these companies over and over again, as they continue to not fix the Chromebooks?
No. We're working on our process for that whole, for the whole repair situation. There were a couple of things that fell through the cracks, but it's not being managed very well, so we're looking at it. No, these are all covered under insurance.
Okay.
So, we're not getting charged. Now, we're being assessed, because I just had my first broken one in my house also. So, it is a $25 fee to get it fixed, but if it's a recurring problem, you should not be charged multiple times.
Yeah, I don't know about me being charged, I mean, like, the screen, he literally turns it on, the screen shuts off.
Okay, that might be, mine was a broken screen, so I would assess $25. So, yours is a actual device issue?
Right. But they keep sending it back, still in that condition, so that's why I was questioning how that works in our buildings.
You're not the first person that I've heard that from, but I will, but no, we're not getting charged.
That's probably a warranty issue with those new ones. They, there's still, if it's an older one, it is a repair fee, we continue to send it back and get them there.
What's the turnaround period?
Currently, we're at about a month. We are looking to cut that down to two weeks.
Okay.
Okay, we're already aware of it, it just is not being managed very well.
Okay. Now, with new ones and the old ones, what's the surplus of the old ones that we give to the students?
We have 58 loaners currently out.
They're out. All the loaners that we have, because our turnaround time is so long right now.
Well, like I said, I mean, I'd give my child nine, just so he has one to use, but he's lucky that he has them.
Do we pay a flat fee for the insurance?
Yeah, we, the insurance on the Chromebooks is through a company called Worth Avenue Group, and we had approved that several months ago.
Yeah, it's 30.
It's, yeah, it was like $30 at the Chromebook, and, you know, they just keep repairing as they come. I remember when we, when we were up for renewal this year, the company said that we actually had the number of repairs compared to how much we insured, like, it basically worked out that every Chromebook was repaired like one and a half times, you know, so it's, across all of them. So, you know, some of them were repaired over and over, others don't have any repairs, but they kind of average out.
Mrs. Weber, do you see a problem with Chromebooks in your building?
They don't go home with elementary supplies.
Yes, they are just, they are just used within the classrooms. So, we haven't had too many problems with the, you know, them having breaking or needing to be repaired.
Do you guys, do we think that there's a need to have more loaners, especially, Chris, if you're talking about the fact that there's 58 out and kids still without? I mean, or...
You know, I, it goes in waves.
Yeah.
We see a lot of breakage over extended breaks. You know, so we'll see a stock, but then typically, we have enough loaners to cover throughout. With the slow turnout, it's been, it's started to back up a little bit. We had some issues that we didn't expect in the beginning of the year with a couple of them. I think some of it, too, is just we're continuing to work with educating the students about, you know, it's still an electronic device, these don't work when you crack the screen, like iPads, being careful with that, don't close your headphones. And it, the most frequent, other than technical break that we see, is the cracked screen, because they'll shut the screen on their pencil, they'll shut the screen on earbuds or something like that. I think we're good with our numbers, to be honest with you. I think it's just a matter of getting caught up again, and we're starting to get more and more back every day.
Anybody have any other new business? All right, it takes us to Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports, Superintendent's Business Advisory Liaison, we talked about that at our last meeting, so there's nothing new to report on yet. Mr. Miley.
Okay, Curriculum and Programming. We had a meeting December 1st, we covered three or four basic issues. We had a discussion about testing updates in the 3rd grade and the high school, and we looked at spring testing. And it's my understanding that the 3rd grade went off pretty much without a hitch, typical types of things. And then, the government was coming up that week, right? Or this week?
Yeah, the high school is testing now.
For retakes. And then, the spring testing, the kids are going to have a delayed start.
The high school kids.
The high school kids, yes. And then, issue number two, we talked about equity training, which is a form of diversity training, and they're kind of looking at this through, first of all, the DLT, and then roll it out to teachers and students later, just formulating the plan. And then, the State Board of Education is meeting to determine graduation rates, requirements, and how that impacts Riverside. I think it's still yet to be determined.
Right, there's a, we just found out today, at least I did, that although they're talking about the pathway to graduation being set at 18 points for the junior class, this year's junior class, the state was considering dropping it. And now, it doesn't look like they're going to vote on it, I don't believe.
Till they're seniors?
Yeah.
They aren't. That's exactly what they said. We have 18 months, just like we always do in education, lots of time.
They want to see the results of the retakes before they drop the requirement.
Okay.
If you're looking at, I think State, I just said something like 30% of the juniors right now would not graduate under these current requirements.
That's great.
They don't seem, they just think there's an urgency.
Okay, and then, the boosters organization, we've been taking a little bit of a hiatus. Think we'll get through the holidays and then get back in the cycle. So, that's it for me.
Okay. Mrs. Grassi?
We have not had a Finance and Audit meeting since our last meeting. We should probably set one up soon. I don't know if we want to do that before the holidays or after, it doesn't matter.
I'm thinking after the holidays, with the whole bond issue process, it's kind of been a whole board, you know, involved thing, so, you know.
That's when it's going to heat up anyway, so that's fine, see, we can figure something out soon. Legislatively, there hasn't been too much going on, most things are sitting in committee right now. The House actually voted and passed a bill that would establish that students who qualify for biliteracy would actually have that on their high school transcript. And they have also been looking at truancy and not being able to expel students for truancy. And those are really the only two things that are sitting, pending, that haven't been sitting out there for years.
Can you define biliteracy, please?
Biliteracy, it means if somebody can speak two languages.
Okay. And is there, they would take a whole curriculum in another language, or just the fact that they graduated from a different?
Just the fact that they can actually speak two languages and would go in there, is that, that is what the way about that?
Interesting, thank you.
It's just, it's a state seal, it doesn't, it's not a notification of anything curricularly, it's just a state seal that would go on your transcript.
Very interesting, thank you.
Is that it's all I have? Okay. Mr. Hack, on to you, please.
I will be very quick.
All right.
We have not had a buildings and grounds since the last meeting, but we will have one after our meeting on the 13th. And there has not been a strategic plan, so I've not attended a meeting with that either.
Right, that was easy.
Very easy.
Okay. Mr. Jeffries?
Same here, Personnel Committee, we have not had a meeting here recently, and there's nothing new to report at this time. Alumni Association, their next meeting is Monday, December 12. There's nothing else to report.
Great. All right, Mr. Kayla, Superintendent's report.
I have more announcements than reports, I think, tonight. I would like to talk about some of the things I put in Friday packages, so the community knows what's going on in terms of facilities. There's a lot that has happened over the last month or so. But for all those people that are interested, we have on our board agenda a resolution to purchase a property, about 10 acres worth of property on Concord and Hamden Road at the address of 1.428, for the purpose of erecting a new elementary school. And we're very excited about that. Now, I have issued a request to have studies done on that property in terms of environmental Phase 1 study, a geotechnical study where they bore into the soil and make sure everything is okay, and a wetland delineation. And hopefully, we'll get that information soon. I don't suspect there's going to be any issues or problems. The only concern I had was over whether or not we can tie into sewer as opposed to wastewater. As we put it out for the bottom, we have wastewater treatment plant, which will cost a few hundred thousands of dollars to do. It would be more practical for us to be able to tie into sewer. And I did place a call to Randy Roethlisberger, Lake County Sanitary Engineer, and copied it also to Dennis Sherkovich, who's a deputy engineer, to open up some dialogue about how we can make it happen to tie into sewer. I sent that email late last week, and I have yet still to, and I copied it to the board, yet still they receive an answer from them. It is my recommendation that before the start of the year, we solicit the support and help of possibly a couple of Lake County... of possibly a couple of Lake County commissioners to see what they can do to help us tie into Also, Buildings and Grounds Committee met with Norfolk and Southern Railroad a while back, and they want to buy about a third of, a third of the acres, point three eight acres of property, fifteen feet coming off of our property lining the long strip wrapped by the county home, for the purpose of building a new trestle, a two-year project across just the street, the one right next to the one that exists now. They wanted to buy the property, we had some concern about whether or not we can sell our property to a utility, and it's a sticky situation. Our council didn't feel very comfortable with it, there were ways to do it, but we came up with an idea to give them a permanent easement in place of selling the property, so we still retain the ownership of the property, but Norfolk and Southern is still going to give us the money that they would have to buy the property. Now, there's gonna be a couple of things going on, once the engineers have developed the plan to build that, they're gonna be over there for about two years, and they want to use part of our property where bus drivers park, so we may have to displace them somewhere, and we're trying to make it, you know, trying to be as accommodating as we possibly can, because we know the importance of building a new trestle. That one was built a, a long time ago, what was interesting is when we met with Norfolk and Southern, I also received a newsletter from the Historical Society, and they have a big steam engine on the trestle, so it's gotta be old, I'm not sure how old it is, but I would suspect probably somewhere in the twenties, I don't know. But if you're looking at it, it'd probably be a good idea, especially when you get stuck in traffic, you don't want the thing to collapse or anything. So that's what we're going to do with that, the, the amount of money they're gonna give the district is fifteen thousand two hundred dollars for that permanent easement. The cell tower is complete, I know you're tired of hearing about the cell tower, but the agreement is complete. Our district will receive nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars a year for the first five years of the contract, and thirty-six hundred dollars for every additional carrier that is put on that tower. They plan on breaking ground in March, and as soon as they, the shovel hits the dirt, the soil, that's when they're gonna start paying us as well. Again, it's not gonna be much of a problem for us, it's gonna be way in the back by the county home, and it won't take very long, they think it'll be up, by the time they break ground, maybe a couple of weeks and it'll be up. Also, land agreement with Sidco is complete, they signed a contract to sell the three acres behind Maston Avenue for a hundred thousand dollars, and that contract was signed, I did hand deliver it to Sidco, and we still have some things to do, we have to survey it, and then we have to zone it over to our property, which we're in a process of, process of getting it surveyed. Also, I will be reconvening the facility committees soon, I think it's gonna be after the thirteenth to learn a little bit more about the process of how we're gonna go ahead with this bond, and solicit input and insight from the people from the committee. Also, those are community members, administrators, teachers, and parents, we have a wide array of people that participate in that committee. We're also going to bring it to our DLT, our district leadership team, and we're hoping that at the building level, we're gonna get some input also from the teachers and other employees in our district through the building leadership teams. And Mr. Body, I think I already mentioned about the diversity training, that's gonna actually occur tomorrow at Loomis Middle School, Mr. Rotino's gonna host the in-service. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Treasurer's report.
Okay, first time since I've been here, my reports may be longer than Jim's. With the passage of the bond, on tonight's agenda, we have a resolution to approve some bond anticipation notes. So we have Mike Brusella from Sazina and Associates, he's our municipal advisor, he's gonna help walk us through this bond issuance process and also the issues of the, of the notes. So he came tonight to help explain the process to the board together, so we're gonna be on the same page on what we're doing and why we're doing this and the implications of it. So I'll hand it over to you, Mike.
Thanks, Gary, good to see all of you again, thanks for having me, appreciate the time. What we're passing tonight is the first phase of the bond issuance construct. So not to get too specific or too technical, but basically, in our world, and when we issue bonds, there is a benefit to issuing debt in a calendar year of less than ten million dollars, because it opens up the investment opportunities when we sell that debt, and it actually improves interest rates for taxpayers. So inasmuch that we have a larger bond issue that obviously in its aggregate could not qualify for what we call bank qualified treatment, so that's what you heard Gary refer to, the heroes use the acronym BQ. We are gonna take a portion of the larger bond issue and designate that BQ, about nine and a half million dollars. And what we're doing tonight is passing legislation to competitively sell those notes, meaning we will put them out for bids starting tomorrow, once this is passed tonight, and on December thirteenth, we will receive bids, interest rates on those notes, and then we will take the lowest interest rate bid on that note. The note will go from December twenty-seventh to June first of next year. That, as of being issued this year, will carry that bank qualified status into next year, even when we take that out from short term, basically six months, and bond it out to the long term for thirty-five years on the bond issue. Thirty-seven years on the issue. What we'll do is issue the remainder of the bond issue in the non-bank qualified note, another short-term piece, once the new year comes. Now, in aggregate, these two notes will represent the whole of the bond issue, and the reason we're selling the remaining next year is that way we get the money in the district's hands, you can start getting into contract negotiations, you can start spending that money, then we will work with Gary and the remainder of the finance team to put together the disclosure statement and prepare the bond issue. The bond issue will then pay off the notes, they'll be done, and now we're into the thirty-seven year repayment of the bond issue. But by doing this on the nine and a half million dollar portion of the bond issue, we're gonna save on average about fifteen to twenty basis points, so point one five to point two percent on the overall expense on that nine and a half million. We provided Gary, as well as Jennifer, the analysis, and overall, this strategy's gonna save taxpayers about a million dollars. So it's a nice strategy to implement, we worked with Jen Blazer to draft the legislation and the notice of sale of the legislation piece tonight that you will pass. So that's kind of the beginning, the tip of the iceberg when it comes to the bond issue. Again, I've been allotted five, five minutes, is that, is that correct? So if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them for you now.
I have one. Does the thirty-seven years then start in June when we issue and repay, or does it start in January like it would if...
The thirty-seven years will start once we pay off, once we do the bond issues. So there will be a time when you will have the entire, double the amount outstanding. You will have the bonds outstanding and the notes outstanding, because there's an interest rate play there, and I'm certain Ryan can talk a little bit about that opportunity here when I'm done, that you're gonna have overlapping investments of that money, especially now where short-term rates have come up, I don't mean to steal any of your thunder, but short-term rates have come up, so there's a nice opportunity here on that ninety-day window where you can invest the bond proceeds plus the outstanding note proceeds, and that money is not restricted, or as restricted, I should say, as other money from the bond issue that Ryan will be talking about as well. So there's an opportunity there, but it'll start, the thirty-seven years will start probably in March when we finalize the interest rates on the bonds.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, can you elaborate a little bit more on the bank qualified, and did I understand you correctly, there's a limit, you can only do ten million dollars in that, through that transaction, can you elaborate, please?
Certainly, so what it is, is this is an IRS rule and SEC designation, that banks cannot buy tax-exempt paper from an issuer who is what we could deem a high-volume issuer, because basically the IRS doesn't want banks to be getting their money. Essentially, the IRS is putting a, a quantification on how much a bank can get away with not paying taxes on their interest, all right? So if you're a small issuer and if you issue within a year less than ten million dollars, that issue, banks are qualifying to bid and to buy the, the investments on that issue. So it opens up an investor pool, and they are much more aggressive on their interest rates than institutional or large block buyers. So that's where we get the interest rate benefit from.
And the fifteen basis points, is that just, so again, I, probably there's a little fuzzy, so the, the BQ, and then it sounds like we refinance in June?
Yeah, so you'll issue this, you'll actually refinance this portion in March.
In March.
And then the note will come due in June.
And is the fifteen basis points just between now and March, or will it carry through?
Oh, no, that'll carry through on the nine and a half billion for thirty-seven and a half years. That's the reason we designated this year.
Gotcha.
And by taking that out within ninety days of its maturity, it's deemed a current refinancing, so that when you do it now, and you take the six months, you turn it into thirty-seven and a half years, you will still carry with that thirty-seven and a half year another prepayment option.
It's a good question. Perfect. Thank you.
Certainly.
Can you elaborate a little bit more on the, the non-bank qualified notes that we're gonna issue in January? What the benefit of doing that is, are we required to do that with rising interest rates right now, is that still advantage to do that?
There's an advantage to do that just to get the, the funds in hand, because, yeah, at the moment, you wanna have the ability to sign on all of your construction programs to get your CM together, if you have soft costs ready to go on the architecture side, it allows you to start going right away on your, on your construction program. Also, there's a benefit there on the investment side, the, you were on the ELP designation for this expedited local partnership, so there isn't a requirement on the non-bank qualified note side in terms of getting the state money quantified or brought in, but it does put money in your hands with which you can start working and signing contracts. So it just gets you going in the market right away, you have everything you need at your disposal on the short-term paper. It essentially pays for itself, especially now, given this rise in short-term rates, we can be able to get that investment proceed back on.
Earlier we heard that, I remember hearing that there was, investors were paying a premium for, for bond issues such as what we are doing, is that something that you anticipate continuing into, you know, at least to the point where we sell our non-BQ?
Given the current interest rate markets, non-bank qualified paper, so it'll be the bulk of the transaction, yeah, there's gonna be a premium structure through the belly, what we call the belly of yield. Basically, if we were to, to chart out what the yield curve would look like on the thirty-seven years, you have pretty aggressive rates on the short term, less risk, what we call non-callable paper. Those investors know that whatever interest rate they get on that paper within eight years and less, they're gonna get that interest rate. Anything after eight years, investors know that you're gonna have the option to call that in, if down the road in a couple of years, you have a better interest rate. So they have to price that particular transaction to what we call that call. So what it is now, that given this low interest rate market, that seems to be shifting a little bit, from my understanding though, from what we're hearing on the underwriter's side, is that the market is anticipating a rally again come the new year, once the establishment of the new administration. Now, when I say interest rates are rising now, we are still in an environment of historical lows. So we're talking about going from a ten-year treasury rating of one and a halves to around two point three percent. So we're not talking a massive growth on interest rates, but the, the election did bring with it an odd change in odd behavior on the investor side that was not anticipated in the market. So that premium structure will probably be generated, that's something as we approach March and the market, we'll start getting skills from our eventual underwriter selection, and they'll start showing us what that premium requirement will be. It'll be a mix of premium bonds and discount bonds, all depending on where, on the curve, how long the maturities these investors wish to purchase. Now, we need to generate premium on this issue, because in the, in the end, we need to put in Gary's construction fund the exact amount that the voters approved on the ballot. So that premium structure will be a requirement, so that we do pay all third-party costs associated with the transaction, and in the end, voters get everything they voted for.
Perfect, thank you.
Certainly. And the, the issuance of these notes, the BQ notes, allows us to get the funds in December, we're gonna close on the twenty-seventh, so it'll allow us to make our land purchases and the other costs that will, that will start rolling out now, as we get to the point where we actually issue the, the real bond. Next on, also on tonight's agenda, we have an approval of a contract for an investment manager, so we have Ryan Nelson, he's from Red Tree Investments. I'm proposing we use Ryan to, to help us invest the funds and get the most interest income from our, from our bonds as we, you know, because we're gonna have all this money on our hands, and as the construction project goes on, Ryan will help us invest these funds. I worked with Ryan over at Orange Schools when I was there, and he handled about thirty-five million dollars over there at Orange, and he's more than capable to, to help us out, so Ryan's gonna, you know, kind of present himself and his firm and what they do.
Good.
He went over five of them. Ironically, Ryan and Mike used to be competitors, you know, six months ago, before Mike made the jump to Miss, to the school of Ohio.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to the school districts and community for passing the bond issue. Thank you. Thank you for asking me here tonight. I'm standing back here, you want to work out? I just have, you look at my back, hope that's not a problem. My name is Ryan Nelson, I'm the managing principal and owner of Red Tree Investment Group. We are a firm that primarily manages money from public entities across the state of Ohio. We're located in Cincinnati, the southern tip of, of the state. And I'm here tonight just to introduce myself and the firm, and how and what will happen with the monies that, that Mike and the proposed underwriters are gonna be bringing to market for the school district. We, we manage a little over two and a half billion dollars in assets here in the state of Ohio, about a billion of that is in construction funds, similar to just what Riverside is going through right now. I've included in the, in the packet there just a sample of some local school districts that we work with here in the area. We, I'm a CFA charter holder, so is my partner in the office, and we're an SEC-registered investment advisor. On page two, just a sample of the services that we provide overall, we serve as a discretionary investment advisor, and we'll get into that in a moment. We've come up with an investment strategy for the, for the bond proceeds, working with the school treasurer and reporting back to the school board, working with, with Mike, working with the underwriter, working with Jennifer Blazer at Dinsmore as well, working, you know, on the investment policy statement. I talked to Gary about how important it is to keep really, really good records here, because there will be a day when Jennifer Blazer from Dinsmore will be looking to do different types of what's called arbitrage reports, so we'll have really good reporting of that. And then, just available for future board or finance committee meetings, I mentioned the finance and audit meeting here. On page three is a detail of the investment team. Certainly, the investment decisions reside with Riverside Local Schools and Treasurer's Office and the school board, providing the due diligence on the investments, doing the monthly investment reporting, communicating to the board. At Red Tree, we serve as a discretionary investment advisor, and what is that? A discretionary investment advisor means that we have discretion on the accounts. We can buy and sell securities on behalf of the, of the school district. We're not going to, you're going to be busy, you're busy now with your, your current job, you're gonna be even busier building a, a couple of the elementary schools. So we take care of all the investments and report back to the school district on a monthly basis, is how, that's the term discretion means. Come back with an investment strategy, we'll provide monthly reporting and communication to the treasurer's office. And additionally, US Bank will serve as a third-party custodian. As we make investment decisions and purchase investments on behalf of the school district, someone needs to hold those securities as a third-party custodian, and US Bank serves as a third-party custodian or safekeeper of, of the securities, that's an extra layer of securities for the, for the securities. So there's, there's a three different investment team members. On page four is an idea of actually what the bond proceeds can be invested in. The, the school district has an investment policy statement that follows the Ohio Vice Code, Chapter 13514. And the types of investments that not only these funds, but other funds the district can be invested in range from Star Ohio, which is the state-run investment pool at State Treasurer's Office, ranges from CDs to bank sweep accounts, and then it gets into marketable securities such as US Treasury securities, government agencies, and... into marketable securities such as US Treasury Securities, government agencies, and commercial paper. The commercial paper does have restrictions. The treasurer is required to take a training course in order to, the school district owns commercial paper, and he has completed that. And there are certain limitations that come with that.
Just a, sorry if I could, if I could. So for other than, the investment options, other than the commercial paper, is our principal at risk?
The only, when you, when you look at principal and risk, if you're looking at risk of, of investments, it starts, I would probably put CDs and your bank sweep accounts, the top two, and then, then Star Ohio, and then Treasury Securities, Government Agency Securities, Commercial Paper, and a, and a level of risk. For, for public funds, your, your main risks are, if you own marketable securities, is market risk, meaning that you buy a security today and it changes in the market and it's worth a little bit less tomorrow or fifty or more depending on market. And you hold it to maturity, there's no problem. Commercial paper introduces credit risk. So commercial paper is a short-term debt obligation of a corporation such as GE or Coca-Cola. And the maximum maturity on any one commercial paper holding is 270 days or nine months.
Okay. So it's a very, very short term.
Very, very short term. And you have, there's certain ratings requirements, it has to be of the highest ratings requirements from Moody's and S&amp;P. So it is, it is very restrictive as to what types of even commercial paper that you can, you can't go out and just buy some, some random commercial paper.
So has Moody's and S&amp;P, have they gotten better since the 2007 housing loan prices?
They've been less in 2007 than 2008. So there, we have, we work off of an approved list for commercial paper, and we have 14 names that we purchase. Not very many names in the commercial paper market to, to purchase. But for these funds, and because of the short-term nature of the funds, it will be very advantageous to own commercial paper.
Yeah, it's always a balance. I just was, was curious.
No, and that's a really good question as it relates to risk. Remember, the investment objectives of not only of the bond proceeds, but of all funds of the school district follow three main rules, safety of principle, liquidity, then a market rate of return. So rate of return is, is great, but we need to be the first to do that when it comes to that. And this, again, we have to sign the investment policy, it's on file with the treasurer's office.
Also, I wanted to point out that Star Ohio, it's the state treasury reserve, they actually invest a lot of their funds into, into commercial paper as well. So it's not, it's not, it's not really a high-risk type of investment.
No. Page for clarification.
No, absolutely. On page five, we want to talk a moment, as I understand the scope of the project here is for two new elementary schools totaling about $38.5 million. And just conversations with Gary, the projected completion time is the summer of 2019. And working with Gary and listening to Mike propose financing plan will be about $9.5 million, $9.6 million of notes issued in December. Those notes, the month, that $9.6 million is projected to be available on December 27th. And then again, in January, there'll be another note issued along with the bonds. And I know, Mike, you got into that whole overlap, that, that's a whole different discussion, and that there is some money to be made there, but let's get through the next first before we start, start going down that path. What's going to happen on, with, with all of this is on page six, the mechanics of investing the funds. Working now, I met with Gary last week and met with the superintendent and assistant superintendent at the OSBA, just talking through this process, what's going to happen. Required paperwork, meeting with the treasurer, talking to the financial advisors, talking to Jennifer Blazer from, from Dinsmore as well, getting a feel for what the project is, getting a feel for what the local bank options are. Maybe some of these monies would be better suited to be invested at, at the local bank because of the short-term nature. I know you have to buy some land in, in the near future. But we're going to look at all of that before we come up with a portfolio scenario. But in, on December 27th, the, the school district will have $9.6 million. And you're not going to eat on, you're not going to need all $9.6 million on December 27th. So we've got to come up with an investment plan for that. And you're going to have another $28 million in, in, probably early February if you do the, the notes.
Yeah, mid-January, late-January.
Early February. And right now, you don't have a construction manager. And right now, we know we want to be in the buildings in 2019, right? So we have to work backwards on this. We work with, this is my 15th year in this business, and I have worked with a lot of schools out there, the same exact spot. You do not have a draw schedule at this time. So we know when you want to be in the buildings, and we work backwards to build a bell-shaped curve, is what it really comes down to. We know that, that most of that spending is probably going to be sometime in the middle to late of, of 18, of your big, big portion of your spending. So if you're spending, you're going to have some land that you have to buy here upfront and some other costs. So your, your curve will, it, it looks like a bell-shaped curve at, at the end of the day. So trust me on that. That's what, what it looks like. So we will model out what a draw schedule looks like. And I, and also, as it relates to risk and as we're investing, I mentioned market risk there, we don't want to purchase a bunch of long-term securities here to lock in really high rates because I know you're going to need the funds. So we have to, we have to be cognizant of that. We want to build a portfolio that complements the project and make as much interest as we possibly can off of the funds without putting any of it at risk with that, when it comes down to that. So over the first couple of months, we're building that investment strategy, reporting back to, to the treasurer's office of what's going on there, working with, with the financial advisors and underwriters as well. And then from there, it's, I like to come to some of the, I guess the term is core construction meetings, once the construction manager is up and running and they're hired, to get a really good feel for what they're seeing with the project and what they see with the spending needs of the project are over time for that, so we can make changes in the investment portfolio. And then as it goes through there, you know, we just start working with the school treasurer. Typically, they'll have draws towards the latter part each month, once the project gets heated up, and we'll start drawing funds from, from the, from the account with that. So that's sort of, in a, in a real simple nutshell, what's going to happen here in the next, in the coming months. It is, the most money the school district has probably had at any one point in time, and it's very important that, that there's a thought process that's put in place. I've seen a lot of school districts wake up on December 27th and have that, oh crap moment, like, oh crap, I've got $9.6 million today, what are we going to do? We want to have something prepared before December 27th about what we're going to be prepared to do with that. Any questions on that? And then on page seven is how we work as a firm. We're an investment advisor. We are not a broker. We are, we charge an investment management fee on the funds that we actually manage back in the office. If we sat here and determined that some of these monies are, are best suited at First Merit slash Huntington or Star Ohio, then that's where the funds will be invested and we don't charge fees on funds that we do not invest back in our office. So if, if it made sense for all $38 million to be in, at Star Ohio, I have a fiduciary duty to the school board to tell you that when it comes to that. So our fees are based off of the monies that we manage in the office, and I can't give you an exact number of what that would be because I need to work with Gary about what maybe First Merit's offering and how much you need for, for land, et cetera, here in the next, next month or two when it comes to that. In addition, we pay all the US Bank fees out of our fee. And there's not an additional, the last, last thing I want is for you to be nickel and dime with banking fees. Just pay a fee and, and be done with it. So ours is an all-inclusive type of program when it comes to that. Page eight is, I threw in here all of our current school clients. We work with a host of clients across the state of Ohio. Some are construction funds and some are operating funds as well throughout the state. Can I answer any further questions about what's going to happen here in the next coming days? Yes?
I have just, well, three. The interest that we earn and the money that we're going to invest in the short term, what are we allowed to do with that? Is that, is that used to pay down?
It can be used for the, it can be used for the needs of the project.
So it can be used for either purpose?
Overruns, usually interest is saved for, for overruns and matters like that.
Yeah, as I said now, Mike Macarello, you know, obviously, you know, he was treasurer, and he went through a building project at Madison, and he also recommended that the interest earnings you earn, you hold on to, to the end of the project because you have cost overruns. If you end up running over what you borrowed, then it's going to come out of your PI funds or operating funds. So it's best to hold on to, towards the end of the project and see where you're at, and then spend those funds if, if they're not going to be needed on another, on another purpose that's related to the bond.
Do we count those separately? Do those have to stay in the bond fund?
Typically, you keep them in, in the bond fund.
They'll stay in the project fund.
Okay.
Interest, or I gave that sheet the other day about how to set up your, your accounts. The, once we have a, the construction managers in place and we have a better idea of what's the project will, then we'll be able to do a better estimate of how much interest will be earned over the life.
And then the other question I had was, our board policy is, policy number 6144 is our investment policy. It hasn't been updated in quite some time, and it's not in this section of board policy updates. Could we?
Well, actually.
Gosh.
It was updated in, it's the most recent policy.
Okay. I just want to make sure because it's, we're, we're updating.
It was updated in January 15.
Yeah, we're updating policy this evening, and it's not on the outlaws. I just want to make sure that what we have in our board policies is, is sufficient.
It is. And Gary and I have worked through that. The policy that you adopted in January 15 is the new, new Neola.
The new, okay, right.
I can say that fast three times about that. Is the new Neola policy, which incorporates, there was changes in investment laws for, under the Ohio Advice Code in September 14. And this policy does incorporate.
So we're, we're good.
You're good there. Actually, I brought this down a copy. Okay. Thank you for bringing that up. You, you're good there. Did you have, do you have a third question?
No, that was three. That was three. This is the two questions on the address.
Any further questions I can help you out with here? And once this is all, everything is all wrapped up and, and Mike and everybody's done their job, I will come back out and explain to the board about what everything looks like and why it looks like there, and go through it as well for questions with that. Can I answer any questions you have on commercial paper when it comes to that?
Terrific. Thank you.
And then Ryan, we'll be, you know, like over, we were at Orange, you reported a lot of the report that went in part of the board package, so we can plan on doing something similar like that, that, that way we can have a, an ongoing discussion and analysis of what we're investing in and what kind of interest we're getting and things like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan and Mike.
Thank you.
Also, on, on, tonight we have to go over the, the board reports for November. I'm just going to go real quick. I'll pass off the hard copies here and, you know, I'll actually try to keep it five minutes or less than like.
And then information overload.
Yeah, right.
Okay, I'm going to start, just on our, our bank reconciliation on page two, just because there's one odd ball item. There's an outstanding transfer of a million dollars. I had done a transfer from our Star Ohio account into our checking account, and I didn't think about it and did it on the 30th, so it doesn't hit till the first, in, in First Merit, so that's why there's a million dollar variance on our reconciliation. It's just, the money was in transit from one account to the other on the 30th, so that's why that, that million dollar outstanding item is sitting there. The next page is our fund balance report. Once again, nothing out of the ordinary. When we get our, are starting to get our bond funds in, they're going to go into Fund 004, since we're not an official OFCC project, we're in the LPP program, so we'll use Fund 004 to account for that, and we'll set up a separate sub, sub-accounts within there to, to help track the different projects and the different buildings. The next page is just our appropriation summary. Our remaining balances are all positive, which is what we want to see in the last column. We haven't overspent our appropriations, so we're in good shape and, and compliance with the Ohio Balance Code. Flipping to page five, this report again kind of follows the formula of the five-year forecast, the first set of columns comparing November of this year to November of last year. On the revenue side, there's a variance of about $1.3 million, and that was just because of the timing, the home set rollback payment happened a month later this year than it did last year, so that's why the variance is there. If you move over to the next set of columns comparing fiscal year-to-date of this year to last year, the variance there is about $360,000, and that's because with the phase out of the TPP revenue, that's why we see that we, we lost revenue in that line compared to the previous year, and then lose a little more into next year when it's fully phased out. We did have an increase in other revenue of about $257,000. There was some open enrollment increase in our district that we're starting to get paid for, so that's most of the jump there. On the next page, this is our revenue report for the general fund. And just to kind of point out, the state reimbursement TPP tax loss line, that, that's that line that affected the previous page. We received our first half payment, which was $94,000. We originally estimated about $219,000 for this year's TPP payment. It's only going to be about $188,000. We finally got the final numbers from the Department of Education. As you know, last year was about $950,000. The year before that was $1.6 million. So that was our, our big hit from this current state budget was in that line. And the interest income sticking out like a sore thumb because we only projected $5,000 in income this year, and we're already at 11, almost $12,000 in interest income. So rates have been on the rise and I've been utilizing Star Ohio a little more than we have in the past, and actually changed our, our, some of our settlements to go right into, to Star Ohio to start capitalizing on interest instead of going into our main checking account. And the last report, just our expenditure report, at the top, you know, we're five months to the year, so we're 41.6% through the year. You see our, our salary, you know, we're spending, we're at 41.6% exactly. Benefits is 41.7, so we're right on line with our salary and benefit lines. And then the next page has our, our breakout of our purchase services. We're only at 32.3% spent. We had talked, when we did the five-year forecast presentation, I thought the estimate was a little high, and it's continuing trending where we estimated higher than, than the actual net. And that's pretty much all I have for the financial reports. If anybody has any questions. The only other update I have is, you know, we contract with the auditor states, the local government services to prepare our annual financial statements. They had completed filing, or they completed preparing the 2016 financial statement, which I have two copies here if anybody wants it. It's still in draft form. The auditors are, came back to begin the, to re-start the audit. They had started earlier to get some work out of the way, but they've come back to complete the audit. So we're hoping to have that done probably in January sometime, and it'll be released from the auditor state to go public. And then that's, that's all I have. That concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you very much. It takes us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. Any comments today, any questions? Okay. It takes us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove a consent agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually. Finance and audit.
We have motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit consent agenda as recommended by the treasurer, it's A through E. Hold a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Can we call a roll?
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Stephen Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next, we have a resolution F, the resolution providing for the sale and issuance of not to exceed $38.5 million in school improvement bond anticipation notes, which is located in Exhibit C.
Hold a second.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on that? Then can we call a roll?
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Stephen Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And last is Item G. We have a resolution to approve a real estate purchase agreement with Dana L. Sterns for a property located at 12428 Concord Hampden Road in Concord, Ohio, which is approximately 9.85 acres. The purchase price for the property shall be $325,000. The contract is in Exhibit D.
I'll second. Thank you. Is there any discussion on that?
I just want to publicly thank Mr. Sterns for being so easy to work with and giving us the opportunity to put this building on this property.
It's been a hard work since March, working at several different properties. And initially, we started off with about 24 properties in that Leroy Concord corridor. But I would say that his was probably the most painless throughout that process. And, you know, he works in a neighboring school district, and he understands what we were going through as well, and he was trying to help us in the community.
Exactly.
And we got it for a pretty decent price as well compared to some other properties that we were selling off there.
Is there anything else? Can you call a roll?
Stephen Jeffries.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Motion carried. It takes us to personnel.
Motion to approve the items listed on Personnel Consent Agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through F.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Mr. Placo, call a roll.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Stephen Jeffries.
Aye.
Next, there's a resolution to -- no, I'm wrong. Next, there's a resolution to terminate Christopher Hemmy, transportation operator.
That we do eat, right?
Okay.
Well, no, that was part of it.
That was part of it.
I'm sorry. My fault. You got it right.
A resolution to terminate Christopher Hemmy, transportation operator. Second on that?
I'll second.
Any discussions with that one? Mr. Placo.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Stephen Jeffries.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Motion carried. Curriculum and programming.
That's me. Motion to approve the items listed in Curriculum and Programming Consent Agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through B.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Other than you.
I have just one question. As far as some of the policies, I know I had just listed some questions, and not to hold up the process, but can we address those at some point in either a work session or just through conversation would be fine?
Ones that are up for?
The ones that we have up for today that I just had some questions on that I had emailed you, so we could just go over those one for you in a second time.
If you sent them to me in an email, you listed the numbers?
I did.
Okay. All right. Must have been, that was a while back when that was.
It was.
All right, I'll take a look.
It was late at night, remember?
In the weekend, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was.
Friday night, yeah.
Sorry.
There's a lot of robust thinking, there's one in the morning.
Any other discussion? Okay.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Stephen Jeffries.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried. Buildings and grounds.
So do I have anything?
It's.
Yeah.
The organizational is under Buildings and Grounds?
Through which we, yeah, I'm not sure what we have. Through which we need to decide when our budget hearing and organizational meetings are going to be in January.
Yeah.
More in your life.
There's two, Stephen.
Supposed to be, but either way.
Okay. So we're sticking with Tuesdays, still, right? When does it have to be done by? First 15 days? So we're looking at the 10th of January? So moves for me.
Moves for me.
Steve?
Just a minute.
Jack Miley.
I'm in.
Okay, Belinda?
It's finally.
January 10th? Mm-hmm. Does not appear to be.
No, it is good during basketball season.
That's what I'm looking at.
Is that, what time are we going to do that?
6:45 is the budget.
6:45?
Yes, because an organizational meeting is then at 7:00.
Okay, that'll be mine.
Okay.